Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen meeting on March 6th this evening. Mr. Pino, do we have a need for a non-public this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We do underemployment.
Consideration of minutes of February 21st. Do we have any questions or corrections?
I don't. Would you like a motion?
I would.
I move that we accept the minutes of February 21st, 2024, as written.
Second. Motion by Linda, seconded by Brian to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a couple of public hearings to start off the evening with. First one. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 6th, 2024, the Town Hall to consider an application for issuance of an alcohol beverages permit to Lakes Region Newcomers Club for their new member reception on May 2nd, 2024, at the Abernacki Ski Lodge at 390 Pine Hill Road from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Have anybody to speak to this? Thank you.
I'm Jim Connor, and I'm the co-president with my wife Margaret for the Lakes Region Newcomers Club. And we held a new members event in Abernacki in November, and I think the total in attendance was around 50. And the club has about 500 members.
Wow.
And we pick up about 12 to 15 new members every year. It is quote a newcomers' club, but we have, my roots go back to the early 1960s in Oscebee. So anyway. So we would like to host our second gathering for new members, as you said, in May. Probably the same number of attendees, 50 to 60, and as you said, is BYOB. Abernacki was a great venue for us in November, and a lot of people had not been in that lodge. And we also had tours of Pop Whelan, and people were really pleasantly surprised by the facilities and were really surprised by the snowmaking. But so it was, you know, great for new people to see that part of the town. So it went very well in November, and we're hoping to have it again in May.
Okay.
So are there any questions? I really appreciate your time and consideration tonight.
Okay. Well, I'll open up a public hearing if anybody in the audience has any questions. I'll open a public hearing this time. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions, comments?
The only thing I want to say is I talked to Amy and all the police, fire, rescue public. All these have been approved already and signed. Our document just isn't signed. So we're okay with having all our department heads already signed off on it. So would you like me to make a motion?
I would.
So move to issue an alcoholic beverage permit to Lakes Region Newcomers Club for their new member reception, May 2nd, 2024, at the Abernacki Ski Lodge on 390 Pine Hill Road from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're all set?
Thank you very much for your time and your service.
Thank you. Okay. Next public hearing. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will, is continuing a public hearing from Wednesday, February 21st to March 6th at approximately 6:30 to consider a temporary event permit for the American Legion Post 18 to host Fourth of July Parade on July 4th, 2024, with a rain date of July 5th, 2024, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Permit number 2024-21. I don't see any members from the Legion here for this. Comments or questions in the board to start with?
When you're ready, I have a motion.
Okay. I will reopen the public hearings. This is a continuation of a public hearing. So if anybody in the audience has any questions or comments regarding the Fourth of July, the permit for the Fourth of July Parade? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I have a motion. I'll move to issue a temporary event permit for the American Legion Post 18 to host the Fourth of July Parade on July 4th, rain date, July 5th, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Permit 2024-2, contingent upon receiving a current insurance rider two weeks prior to the event, that the information tent is in Tam Park, and that the police parking and road closure plan be brought to the Board of Selectmen prior to the event.
Second.
A motion by Linda, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hope for good weather for that weekend.
Absolutely.
Next on our agenda is the bulk vote. We have two weekly manifests, one to February 23rd for $813,792, and another manifest for March 1st for $1,679,798, which obviously has a school payment in there. We have a property tax credit exemption, an abatement, and a yield levy tax. We have a motion on the bulk vote.
I'll move to accept the bulk vote, A through D.
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have no board committee appointments this evening. So next, under new business, is a discussion regarding the education funding lawsuit ruling the impact of Wolfboro. We have our state legislators here with us this evening, so welcome you guys to come up to the table here. So a few folks who'd each just introduce yourselves at the beginning here, and then we'd go ahead and lead us off.
I'm Katie Peternell, one of the representatives of Wolfboro, and I'm on the Education Committee down in Concord.
Glenn Cordelli, I represent Tuftonboro, Wolfboro, and Oscebee, and I am Vice Chair of the Education Committee.
John McDonald. I'm on the municipal county government, and I'm also one of the representatives for Wolfboro and Tuftonboro.
Thank you.
Before we start, we're discussing some of the results of the most recent, of the findings of the most recent lawsuit. There was rand and convale and how those decisions will affect the town and the school district. But I also want to preempt that by saying that this is all in flux. We have an amendment to a bill yesterday, and that could change at any moment's notice. So the numbers that we give you are accurate to the best of our knowledge at this moment in time, but.
Could change by nine o'clock tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Can you, I'm getting, they're having a hard time hearing you. Will you almost, you have to almost meet the microphone.
Really close to the mic.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So back in the fall, there were two court rulings. One was, these are, sorry, to begin, back it up. These are ongoing continual lawsuits regarding education funding that go back to the original Claremont decisions back in the late 90s. So it's the same argument, are we funding an adequate education, and where does the money come from? So back in the fall, there was a court, a Superior Court ruling that came down and said that the cost of an adequate education is now $7,356.01 per pupil. That was the convale decision. The other one was the rand decision, which impacts Wolfboro significantly because that has to do with the statewide education property tax. And for any taxpayers who are watching, the portion of your tax bill that says state is actually an education tax in addition to the local school tax. And that's what would be affected by this ruling. So the judge declared that any towns that collect excess statewide education property tax that's above what they need to fund an adequate education should now be collected by the state. Back in the day, we were known as, we were what was known as a donor town. So this kind of puts that terminology back into play, although they're not using the term donor town at this moment.
That was issued February 20th.
And then on this February 20th, the judge, Judge Ruoff, decided that he wanted that money collected within the next 60 days. There have been appeals and requests to stay his decision, and he has refused to do that. So we have to take action sooner rather than later, according to his decision.
The amount for Wolfboro would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.5 million, and about $1.3, $1.4 million for Tuftonboro in what they consider to be excess swept, or excess of what's required by the town to fund an adequate education.
So we've had several bills regarding this already. And last year, the state legislature voted to increase state funding of education by $160 million. We had increased the base adequacy rate up to $4,100. This year, we had a bill, and we increased it to $4,400. But as of yesterday, there was an amendment to that bill, and that's increasing the base cost to the court decision of $7,356.01.
That bill passed the House. Sorry. It's a little bit different in the House. That bill passed the House and went to finance, and this is a finance amendment that we got at 3:00 yesterday afternoon. So you're one of the first people to know about this. But it's a sweeping change to education funding.
The other part of this amendment increases the amount of swept statewide education property tax to be collected from the municipality. So the way that rate is calculated is the state sets a rate of $363 million, and then they take your property, take the property values from every property in the state, and they equalize it because towns value their property differently. And then they decide which, how much the town sets their tax rate at. And right now, it's $1.22 per thousand. But the, this amendment, if it stays, if it passes, increases the overall statewide property tax rate to $773 million.
From 363.
From 363 million. So that takes the overall excess swept from all of the quote-unquote donor towns from 29 million to 90 million in excess. And I asked somebody from the Department of Education today what Wolfboro's excess quote-unquote swept would be if we were to have to collect that, and that would be $5.3 million.
That would be, in 2025, that would have to be that amount, the excess swept of 5 point whatever million dollars, you would have to send to the state in the fall. And the number of quote-unquote excess swept or donor towns would increase from the current approximately 25 to roughly 100 towns around the state that would have to be sending money to the state to help fund education in other towns around the state.
Do they take into consideration that we're a regional school district, and Tuftonboro and Wolfboro already pay more in order to support the other towns? Is that calculated in here?
That was my assumption of how it worked, but that's not how it works. I'm assuming that once the revenue reaches the school budget, it's distributed that way. But the tax rate is calculated based on what our specific towns owe.
So in other words, it's not taken into any consideration that's, is there?
It has, yes. Even, I would, yes. Yeah.
That was a question that Representative Peternell asked the department this afternoon, and I was able to get that answer from them.
Thank you.
So the increase of adequacy from 4,400 to 7,356.01, the judge was brilliant and was able to calculate to the penny what it costs to educate a child. And it was a very interesting part, well, that's a separate issue. So that takes effect of this year, July 1, 2024. The rest with returning excess swept, no, excuse me, the 7,356 takes effect of July 1, 25. The increase in swept from 363 million to 773 million takes effect of this July. And that's why the bump up in the excess swept calculation. This excess swept per the new amendment has not been made public yesterday, but Representative Peternell asked the Department of Education for the information and was able to get this information. There will be town-wide spreadsheets of the impact available in the near future at a future finance committee meeting.
I also spoke with the Department of Revenue Administration, asking if, how they would collect this swept. And they do not have a mechanism in place, so we would have to, that would have to be part of what, any amendment that would come forward. But they also are aware that we're in a state of flux, so they're not making any decisions right now about how they're going to go about actually collecting that money from the towns.
So what will happen from here is, this was just introduced, this amendment Tuesday There will be future meetings of finance. Finance is broken up into three divisions. Division 2 of finance deals with education, so they're dealing with this. At some point in the future, they will vote on an amendment. There's very possibly new amendments coming added on to this. So again, as Representative said, you know, we're not sure of these numbers and if these are going to be final, but Division 2 will finance, will vote on it. Then it goes to the full finance committee. They will vote on it, possibly amend it. And if they pass something, that will come to the full House for a vote. If the full House passes it, it goes to the Senate, and it starts all over again. So when this, if everyone agrees and passes this, when it could pass the Senate and actually go to the governor's desk, you know, I would think May would be the, probably the earliest that that could happen. But it would have to happen around that timeframe if they want the, this increased swept to take effect July 1. And if I could add, Wolfboro is a member of a group called the Coalition, the quote-unquote donor towns. There's approximately 25 of them now. And Representative Peternell and I had a conference call with the chair of that group this evening already. And we're trying to mobilize people to let other communities know what's going on, not just the current 25, but the possible future 100 communities. So what we've talked about with the chair of the Coalition is a, in the near future, having a large online meeting with town, select board members, and representatives to the Coalition, plus state representatives from these towns, because the other state representatives have to know what's going on, because we're going to have to vote on this legislation this spring sometime. And it's very possible that we could impact not only what the final bill is, but possibly be able to put in amendments to help shape what comes to the full House and full Senate and to the governor in the future. And if I could, I have some handouts for each one of you.
Sure.
One is the order from, thank you. One is, you missed. One is the judge's ruling of February 20th. One is the affidavit from the chair of Department of Revenue Administration concerning the implications of the judge's ruling, and a copy of the amendment that we just got yesterday afternoon. So we have copies for each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I mean, this is almost 100%. So where does all that money go? Back to the state? Or does it come back to the schools?
Well, the argument has always been that the state isn't doing its job funding an adequate education, so the money is to be essentially redistributed to the other towns that are unable to collect enough to fulfill their base adequacy requirement. That was always the concept of the donor town.
It's the chess game again, like we've had in the past? So we are a donor town, same as Tuftonboro?
Chess game, shell game, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, whatever. The shell game. All right. So we don't know exactly who's going to benefit from it at this point, correct?
We know who isn't going to benefit. We're going to pay more.
Well, it doesn't go to a specific community. The state would collect it and then distribute it based upon the need in other municipalities or school districts.
Okay. So it's really no different than the one we had before, realistically?
Similar in concept, yes. But right now, every, as Representative Peternell said, everything is in a state of flux, because we have the judge's ruling that said you have to return your excess swept that you have now, in his view, that you should have been saving up for, because you should have known this was going to happen. And you would have to send this back somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 million to the state when the judge says you have to. The Coalition and the state have filed new stays with this US, excuse me, I wish the US, the New Hampshire Supreme Court to stay that ruling about returning the excess swept now, and also asked for an appeal of his ruling. So that's out there too. So a lot of this, you know, the amendment is one thing, and what's going to happen with that, but the judge's ruling of February 22nd and return of swept by the quote-unquote donor towns is still an issue that we don't know when will be decided. The judge says it has to be decided irregardless of what the Supreme Court says, because that could take a while. And he doesn't want, he wants the money collected now and put into an escrow account at the Department of Education based on some future Supreme Court ruling. And it was very interesting. He said that you should have been thinking about this all along and saving money in case you had to return excess swept. And one of the justifications he used was Aesop's fable of the ant and the grasshopper, which is actually in his ruling, is very interesting.
Yeah. Any questions, comments from the board at this time?
I just think we need to get back to the Coalition and make sure we know where they are, and we keep updated on that from the Coalition, because that's our voice.
So if I understood you correctly, if all of this goes through, did you state that in 2025, our swept payment would be 5.5 million?
That's the excess swept payment.
Yes. The excess over and above what the state says you need to collect for an adequate education.
I don't, we don't, we don't have a spreadsheet yet that shows us what the total swept would be.
Because right now, when looking at the 2023 tax rate, the, our municipal state education tax rate was $1.84, which based on our assessed valuation is $4.51 million. So I'm just trying to understand, are we looking at a million above that, or are we looking at 5 point something million above that?
I wish we had an answer for you right now, but we don't. These are the only numbers we have. And I actually made a special request to the Department of Education for those numbers, knowing we were coming here tonight.
Thank you.
My opinion is that your excess swept now is about 1.5, maybe 1.8 million, not sure. We've heard different numbers. And that excess amount would go up to the 5.3. So it would increase from 1.5 to 5.3.
Three times, 3.8, three times.
We wanted to make sure we came in as soon as possible before the town votes on the budget next week, and the school district votes on the budget next week, so that the taxpayers are aware of what's going on.
But those budgets are, I mean, you're just about ready, you've given us guesses. So to tell the people not to vote for those budgets because of the guess.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. I just want everybody to be aware of what might be coming down the, yeah, I wasn't implying that.
Okay, if that's the case, that really doesn't have anything to do with what we're going to do on Tuesday.
Right.
Right? It's speculation at this point. It could be with the courts. It could happen further down the line, you know, to get a stay, so.
We just wanted everybody to be aware of, you know, the information as we get it.
You've got one year to do it.
And we can let you know when the next Coalition meeting is scheduled for, and when the next special meeting with state reps and everybody is scheduled for also, that we're trying to set up.
Right. And I think our job as a town is to keep in contact ourselves with that Coalition and be right on top of it here, our own selves. And thank you for bringing us the information.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
I just have a general question. We're supposed to do a reevaluation this year. Would that affect how much money we pay to the state if our value goes up tremendously?
Very probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the, the R.A. calculates an equalized valuation of your property, so if you're doing a reevaluation, I'm sure that's going to impact.
But don't they also have a calculation of how far you are from the total assessed value? Where it's 15?
Deviation.
Yeah. And when we see the updates and stuff they will make or do an abatement, they do some of that calculation of where it would be if it was 100%?
Well, and I thought, and I may have misunderstood you, but I thought you also stated that there would be a statewide equalization relative to swept specifically to try and balance that out. Did I not, did I misunderstand that?
I'm not sure if it's specific to swept, but they do equalize the property tax values in, for swept, yes. I don't know if they apply it to any other tax rates.
But did I also understand that the judge, or whatever, what you said was that this money has to be collected by next year, irregardless of what's irregardless of what happens with the total legislation? So no matter what, we're going to be responsible. Town of Wolfboro will be responsible for the 5-point-whatever million extra?
Right now, it's 1.5 right now.
Right.
That you have to send, that you have to send according to his February 20th ruling, yes.
But we also have a chance of having a stay in front of the Supreme Court. So it could be all held up if we get something there. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
But we still got to pay it ahead of time. No matter what happens with the Supreme Court, is that what I understood?
Not if there's a stay.
It doesn't track, right?
If there's a stay, my feeling is everything is frozen at that point until things are straightened out. So until it's gone through the Supreme Court.
I can just ask a quick question. We pay money to Governor Wentworth every month, every two months?
Correct.
Shouldn't they be responsible to give that money that we've paid since the core case to use that to cover the 1.5 million?
I, I think that would be worthy of discussion.
All right. Well, definitely, I thank you. I liked the news, but I thank you anyway for bringing it to our attention anyway. It's, we can stay on top of it as much as we can. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is an update from Representative McDonald on municipal law changes.
I'd love to have my fellow people join me over here if they'd like to. I guess I have some good, I have some good news. Probably HB1, HB2, which was a state budget that was passed by a voice vote unanimously. And it returned, it's returning about $145 million to municipalities than the previous year, which is kind of exciting, I think. There's a lot of things that are in the budget that were included. Money for cameras for police officers, solid waste management money. One that I think is important is the Senator Bacteria mitigation account. That was a bill that I co-sponsored with Representative Run. And it started off for a million dollars. And Senator Bradley put it into the budget. So hopefully it'll be an annual, annual event. I can't speak enough highly about Senator Bradley. He does so much for the communities that he represents and he never takes any credit for us. So I want to give him a kudos on that. A lot of things, play recruitment, housing initiatives, $10 million for investing in New Hampshire, which allows municipalities and housing developers to access grants. $30 million for affordable housing. $5 million for new housing champion program. $10 million for finding an increase to rates for shelter programs. Again, we're trying to do the best we can with improving the housing throughout the, throughout the state. But I've got all these listed things. I can send them to you if you want to, want to see the detailed stuff. Now, as I mentioned before, I'm in the Municipal and County Government Committee. There's 20 of us, 10 Republicans and 10 Democrats. The group is well represented. There's selectmen, budget committee people, planning board people. And we all try to work together the best for our constituents. There are some things that, like say this, we had a bill that was going to allow four residential units on a one-acre lot as long as you had water and sewer. How's that going to help Wolfboro? Right, we, our water and sewer is pretty much maxed out. So that bill doesn't work for us. It works for Nashua and Manchester, but not for Wolfboro. Last year, I think there were 67 bills that eventually became law that were good or affected the use of municipalities and what they do. Again, there's a whole list from elections to energy, planning board, public safety, a whole different variety of bills. We usually have about 100 bills. This past in 2023, we only had 67 that actually came into law. So we've got, I think the legislatures are paying more attention to what they're sponsoring and what they're going to represent. As you know, we're a Dillon's rule state. And what that is, is local governments only have the power expressly granted to them by the state. We have Conway that wants to charge a dollar a person per night to stay at the hotels. And we already have a rooms and meals tax, but they're using that to offset their fire and prevention and things like that. I don't think that's going to go through because Hampton wanted to do the same thing. And it kind of pits community against communities. I can stay in Wolfboro enough to pay the dollar. Lot of other things. I got one really good bill I wanted to read to you what it's about that you'll probably find really interesting. Just to give you an example of some of the bills that we got.
John, could you just pull the mic up a little closer?
Oh, sure. I apologize for that. Oh, boy. Okay, let me find it. We have a bill that they want to increase the, currently it's two years for county attorney, the sheriff and other county officials. They want to increase that to four. We did that for Rockingham County two years ago. And now Coors County wants to do it. Okay. Here's a countywide communication district. Carroll County is already doing that. We're doing it on individual municipality. Where four or five towns get together. And Wolfboro's not part of that, but it's something that we were involved in in the legislature. They want, now they want to do it countywide. And I don't really think there's a need for it because we already have the one that lets each municipality do it or come into agreement with each other. These are all the different bills. Let me see here. Well, what it is, I can, if I can put my hand up right now, is there was a bill, there is a bill to require parking lots that have over 80 spaces to have a canopy for solar arrays. And so if you've got over 80 spaces like Huggins, probably the Wind Drifter, maybe Pop Whaling, you'd have to put up a solar array over half the parking lot. Again, it sounds like a good idea, but it's really not feasible for communities to do that, you know, with no money coming from the state. Jim, you don't have to think about a way to do that either, okay?
I'm thinking about a way not to do it.
Not to do, yeah. Just, you know, bills like that just shows kind of the difference between different communities. That's from someone down the southern part of the state. Just how we, our views are a little bit different on things. We're just about finished up with the House bills. And those will be, probably next couple of sessions, we'll vote on all those. But pretty much, it's not going to be a lot of change in anything that's really going to affect Wolfboro. That's in my committee anyhow. It's pretty much all the, all the same stuff we get every, every year. Again, we try to look, I try to look out for the best. It's the best for Wolfboro. And that's, that's all I can tell you, to be honest with you.
I have one question. Is there any chance of adding any new bills at this point? Or are all the bills that can go through, is there any emergency bills that go through at the end?
Yeah, I can't think what's.
With those, yes?
We just did one today where there was a change in the law that happened. And we had to do a new bill. We voted on it to do it, and now we haven't exacted it yet. But there is a possibility to do that, yes.
Okay.
And John, what would the deadline for that be?
Well, we could do it either in the House. Crossover's coming up for the House. That means all the bills that are left are going to the Senate. And the Senate will send all their bills over, over to us. So at any time, we could, we could add something. I don't, I don't think that'd be a problem. Another thing, when you, when you look at some of these things in the, in the budget, there's a lot of stuff that you can take advantage of through grants. And I'm sure the town manager must get the municipal newsletter that has a lot of that stuff. I just want to give an update too on that letter that you wrote concerning the New Hampshire Municipal Association that came out of Committee 88. So that'll go to the full House for a vote. I will certainly vote the way you folks asked me to do because I, I see a tremendous value in the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And not just those folks, but also Town Clerks Association, Tax Collectors Association, Chiefs of Police Association, all these different groups that we, we provide support to. And if there's anyone that, you know, they're all in the budget. So folks can come forward and say, geez, can you take that out of the budget? I don't feel that's right. And that's the way I think that we should proceed. Not a total ban on those type of associations coming to the State House and trying to work with legislators. Again, I don't consider them lobbyists. I consider them as people that provide information. They represent 230 towns, New Hampshire Municipal Association. And they're not demanding that I vote the way they want me to vote. They just provide me the information. It saves you guys a trip to Concord. So any other questions I can answer you? No? Okay, thank you very much and thank you for your support. And thank you for the job you do.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Okay, next on our agenda is the rule regarding a kiosk at Mass Landing in the Wentworth Watershed Committee.
I thought Julie Brown was going to be here.
So did I. Table it? Or just go forward? It doesn't matter.
Steve's already looked at it, from what I understand.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like it was pretty well set up.
It's pretty straightforward.
I'm comfortable moving it forward. I think they've worked on it for a while. We would like to get it out before the summer. And I think it has some education to it and.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the kiosk at Mass Landing that has been worked out between the Wentworth Watershed and the town.
Second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Brian to approve the installation of the kiosk at Mass Landing. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next on our agenda is a request from the Downtown Grill regarding a safety plan and some construction they want to do down there.
So just brief you on where we're at. And I believe there's a representative here from Mr. Ford. They are looking to finalize the second floor deck, which was discussed last spring on the Downtown Grill building toward the dockside parking lot. There's a need to protect the pathway and protect citizens walking. As a result, you have a map in front of you that outlines a proposed safety fence, which would be six feet in height. That would prevent people from going into that area. And speaking with representatives today, while they anticipate the duration of construction to take two weeks, there is also some concern relative to weather. And that could impact this to go beyond the two-week timeframe. I did have a discussion with them as well about securing a bond and naming the town on that bond. So they are aware of that. And I did as well ask them to bring forward, if they could, a better rendition of the screening that they're proposing for the rubbish, trash receptacles. With that said, this plan has been approved by the code enforcement officer. It meets his requirements. And I believe there's a representative from Mr. Ford here this evening to speak on behalf of the project.
Hi, I'm Alex. I'm representing Peter Ford. Do you guys have any questions specific to the design project?
You need to pull the microphone closer to you.
My apologies. There we go. Is that a little bit better?
Yes, he can't hear, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Alex Sanders. I'm representing Peter Ford here tonight. He's traveling. He is available by phone if we have specific questions for him.
So I'm wondering if you have a date, and it's related to this, but not related. When's the date when everything will be all done and beautiful and pretty and all the construction is gone?
For the whole property?
Yep.
Yeah, May 1st.
May 1st, yes.
Linda?
Yeah, I have some real concern here. We've had problems all last year, all summer long with trash, construction stuff all over the place not being cleaned up on time. Last year's agreement, we had to haul the dumpster away. When the group has finished talking, I have a motion. I think we need a use agreement. I think we have to nail down the dates. I think that we need to have a penalty if they don't meet the dates. And I also am not willing tonight to make any decision on the screening. We have no way of knowing how the trash is going to come out. One of the things that the community complained to me time and time again last summer was the trash that was in the walkway. So I have some motions when we get to it. But I think that we need to make sure we're very specific on this.
So the landscaping will be done by May 1st?
The landscaping isn't part of what's here today. Let's deal with what's here.
I'm saying the whole project, so the landscaping. And have we addressed the propane tanks? That lease on the propane tanks? We were never paid for that lease, were we?
We were.
We were.
They are up to date on the payment. I believe that there was a landscaping plan, which Christine had worked with Mr. Ford and one of the town's landscapers to develop, which I believe got re-forwarded to the board this morning.
I would like, I would like a nice timeline. I'd have my spreadsheet or timeline that says, this will be done by this date, this will be done by this date, this will be done by this date, screen will be installed this date, landscaping will be installed this date, just so we're all on the same page and we know what's going to happen when. Because, because people in the town are coming to us. I get pictures sent to me all the time. They take pictures and they say, look at this, look at this. It's just too much.
I think what we have front of here is they're requesting something here. What you're talking about is what we have with the lease agreement with them. And that addresses the landscaping. And we should nail that down before we renew the lease with them. And because it ends in July. So I think, and they have to give us 90 days notice beforehand. So we need to put that lease together and nail that piece down in that.
My only fear again is when is prom date?
It is usually around May 8th.
Early May.
We don't want to, you know, we, hopefully it will be in good condition because last time, didn't we have to go and haul stuff away and everything?
That's when we hold the dumpster away. That's why I feel we need a use agreement and it spells everything out.
Because we have, we have 350, 400 kids down there, all dressed to the nines. And this is a real special day for them. And hopefully, if, if May 1st, if you can do it, that would be phenomenal. I would be extremely happy with everything in place so that it looks nice, nice down there. And by the way, I do applaud you for taking two old buildings that were in disrepair and making them much better. There will be a benefit to the town when it's all done aesthetically. And I know it's been hard. I know from, from what I've been doing that finding contractors, getting work done is very, very difficult. I understand all that also.
I'm going to get back onto, onto this proposal in front of us here. And I'm going to agree with Linda. I think we definitely need to have this tied down with the dates. And I'm also in agreement too with not knowing what this screening is going to look like under the deck there for the trash to be behind, how it's going to come out, how the, how the screen's going to operate, if it's going to come out onto the town property.
I got a couple of pictures I can show you to address those issues, if you have that.
Pardon?
I can have a couple of pictures that I can show you that each one of those angles on here is going to look like that addresses each side of this screen of exactly what that is.
I want to plan.
Yeah. Because we have that too here. It shows you the different elevations.
It shows those textures of what those are right there. So you're, you're wondering how it's going to open up.
It's basically on the south elevation, which is the one that's going to be screening the trash receptacles.
I have pictures of what those elevations will be.
So that's stuff we will need to see, you know, before we could grant an approval or anything on it. So that's kind of where I'm at on this.
Well, do you want to look at the pictures now? Or, I brought them.
Yeah, I mean, yes, take a look at them anyway and stuff.
Can I drop them off or bring them over?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Okay, yes.
Brad?
Yes.
You know, I'm not willing to do it on some pictures here.
Right.
You know, I think that they had all the opportunity to put this into our packet, and we've got a drawing that says, facing the lake, they're going to have a black tarp, shade tarp with rails and roller system for allowing access to the trash containers. Without seeing that and knowing where they are going to take that trash in and out and how they're going to remove it, it doesn't work for me. And I don't think that was nailed down during the planning process.
You're right. And just looking quickly at the picture here, we'll come back down this way with it, too. It doesn't show how it operates to roll up and roll down. I mean, the picture there shows it kind of being tied down on some cement blocks on the bottom to anchor the bottom of it. So we definitely need more detail on how it's going to operate and everything, so...
Also, how often?
Yeah, to skit, yeah.
Well, it would operate like a shower curtain. It would hang down. It's a black mesh. It's a high-end black mesh that would hang down, and then it would be picked up, and the trash cans would be taken out, trash cans put back, and the screens put back in front of it. It's breathable, so it allows airflow back and forth. We have air conditioner condensers underneath the deck, so there needs to be a certain amount of airflow back and forth, and it allows us to do all this. There's also a couple of pictures on there that show the Douglas fir lattice work that would be on either side of it, that we're proposing on that side of it. So it looks very, very similar to what that is right there.
Any other questions?
So the trash cans basically will be invisible behind it?
Correct. And we have daily trash pickup. Every single morning, our trash gets picked up. We pay extra for that, to have a service come in there and take that trash out every single day for us.
Is that Wakefield disposal?
It is, correct, yeah. We're partnering with Marker 21 and a couple of other businesses. They come, they take all our trash every single day, seven days a week, at considerable expense. That's our workaround for trash in the area. There's nowhere for a dumpster or anything like that. That's the best that we came up with. I know we probably dropped the ball last summer, our first year of operations, but we're learning, you know, we're getting better at it. It's important for us to have a tidy space out front for our community, for our guests. You know, we're committed to all that part of it. We're committed to a May 1st deadline of having it all done for us. It's no fun having spaces that aren't operational. You know, we're in the hospitality business. We like people to share our space, and it's been a year for the Downtown Grill. It's been a hard year, you know, but we took a lot of lumps in this year. So we want to play nice, you know, we want to get it done, yeah.
Can we get something in writing that if the project isn't done by May 1st, that it will be cleaned up and ready for prom? Even if it's not completed, you will make it very presentable and nice?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's pictures. We were there last year. We take pictures out at the docks and everything like that. We don't want our, we don't want any debris in the background on that part of it, of course, yeah.
And it behooves you to have your trash removed on a daily basis and to have things look nice, because that's for your customers.
Absolutely, yeah, our community, too. Absolutely, we agree 100% on that part, yeah.
Linda?
Yeah, here's a picture of Winnipeg Saki Day. This is the evening. So this be picked up. We've got trash all in our walkway, and that's what happens. And I've watched, when you have those things and you have young people, they come in, they're filled, and boom, it goes. And that's what the public is tired of seeing.
Absolutely.
And we've got to set it up so that there is a real motivation why that doesn't happen. So that's what's moving me to make my statements and push, and this is just one of many I have, so...
Understood.
And that's an evening with the trash, and one of the ones that bothered, were bothered the most were the concerts, which are in the evening. So being picked up in the morning doesn't do it, because it's, the trash is there at night, and that was for two restaurants, and now you're going to have five, correct?
Well, yeah, but some of that gets carried underneath Bayberry. So there's storage area for trash down underneath Bayberry. Marker carries their trash upstairs. This trash out there is just for the Downtown Grill, the Wakefield...
Well, you didn't operate the Downtown Grill last summer. That's not from the Downtown Grill.
Well, you're absolutely right. And part of it, we are confident with that screen. That's not all our trash. People come off those boats, they see those trash cans there, stuff gets unloaded on that. Our bathrooms get used on the first floor by people that come off the boats, and it's hard to police. You don't want to put signs out there that says, "Don't use our trash cans, don't come inside, use our bathrooms." We don't want to be that way, but that's not all our trash. So we're confident with those screens that we have there. It'll put the trash cans out of sight. We can control that area. You'll know it. I mean, if it's not picked up, that's on us, and there's nowhere to hide it. It's all exposed right there. It's important for us to have this look good and, you know, to be part of the community.
Whenever you're ready, Brad. I have some motions.
Okay. Do you have any other comments? Anything, Dave? Okay?
Yeah. I move that the Board of Selectmen table any action on the request by Peter Ford and Alex Sanders to use the town land until the town has created a temporary use agreement with either Peter Ford or Peter Ford's Limited Liability Companies, PCW Property Development, or PPOD, and that the use agreement includes a start and finish date for the proposed safety fence on town property. Provide a penalty fee schedule for any date after the finish date. Require a bond in the amount, and I'll let Jim decide what that amount should be, and bring the temporary use permit back to the March 20th, 2024 meeting for a review and possible approval and signature that night. I also move to take no action at this time on the installation of the deck screening until an adequate signed plan by the owner is provided to the town, which includes the material being used, a scaled drawing of the deck and screening, a written plan on how the trash will be stored and removed, and steps and fees the town will take if the trash is not stored and removed per the plan.
Okay, I think we should probably take... Hold on, we've got to have a second before we have a discussion. I think we should probably take those one at a time. We've got two motions, so we'll look at the first one first.
Okay, all right.
Do I have a second on the motion, the first motion that Linda made?
I want, I'd like a little discussion of it.
Well, not until we have a second.
Second.
Okay, now, a motion by Linda, seconded by Dave. Now we have discussion.
So my question is, are you ready to put up this screening now and to start?
Yes.
So, and that, our May 1st finish date is predicated on you starting at this time?
Yes.
So if we hold off for another two weeks, your May 1st date turns into May 15?
It becomes less probable, yes.
I still think the citizens of this town should have a guarantee that that is going to be cleaned up. Last year, we hauled the dumpster off. So I think that this is needed for, to protect the town property and to let the citizens know that we heard their complaints and we are taking action.
I understand, and I agree with that, but I also have a double-edged sword, where I'd like the project to be done, because I don't want it to drag into May, June, July, August again. Because then, when we start getting busy down on the docks, then there'll be no room for them to work, so...
Two weeks later, that's what we're asking.
And they are...
And then it spills over into our...
Yeah, but they are projecting a two-week duration, possibly a little longer due to weather, so might add another week to that, so three weeks. You can still get it all done during the month of April and be done before May 1st.
Well, the thing, too, now, is there's a surplus of contractors. I mean, it gets exponentially harder to find help around this place the nicer the weather gets, as they start pulling off to other projects of opening up camps and doing other things. So we lose, you know, the ability to have qualified people come in and help. We have it all set up to start March 18th, Monday, March 18th. We have the sourcing, everything all sourced and ready to go on that part. We had two GCs that we've used in the last year, and the relationship didn't work out, unfortunately. We took over the project ourselves, Peter spearheading it and addressing all these concerns and moving forward, and we have an opening date. It's the first time that we've had that in a year for the Downtown Grill and potential opening date of May 1st and having it all cleaned up. And we've drawn that line in the sand, and we're all marching towards that.
So again, I agree with you, Linda, and we need to hold accountable the construction and how it goes, but I also don't want to get in the way of the project. I don't want to trip over our own feet and land flat on our face.
Well, then we go in with no guarantees, and we've got, if you can't learn from your experience, I don't know what you do. I'm willing, if the board wants to, and they can negotiate this out, but I think it's hard, because Jim isn't going to be here. I would meet next week, but I think it isn't realistic. And I'm just really, I think we have to listen to the citizens of this town.
So I was just looking at the calendar, Linda. You know, I think the onus is on Mr. Ford to create the draft document. If they can get the draft document created, we can get it reviewed in-house. And I would suggest, if the board wanted to, we could hold a meeting on the 14th, which is a Thursday.
Absolutely.
I'm more than willing to do that.
To discuss it, and that would allow them to be able to get this lined up and hopefully keep their contractor on board.
Do you need to sit with Jim and Linda for some time, for an hour or half an hour, and be able to have an exact idea of what needs to be addressed?
Absolutely.
Can you guys?
I've read it out, but I can sit down. I'm more than willing to sit down and talk about it.
Please, that would be wonderful, yes, yeah.
But now, you're going to be on vacation.
Yeah, I think Amy can coordinate this. If the documents are sent to Amy, she can forward them to Mr. Ford. And if you can provide me with your email, I'll give that to Amy, and you should be able to make it happen, and I'll have hit and miss internet where I'm at.
Well, I think maybe I'll sit with Brad, because he's the chair. Nothing, you know, I just think that it'd be better that the chair be with me.
All right, so how does this work into our motion now, if we're going to...
We'll do the first part. I'll reread my motion, and I'll change March 20th to March 14th.
Okay.
Okay?
Move it up a week, basically.
All right. I move that the Board of Selectmen table any action on the request by Peter Ford and Alex Sanders to use the town land until the town has created a temporary use agreement with either Peter Ford or Peter Ford's Limited Liability Companies, TCW Property Development, or PPOD, and that the use agreement include a start and finish date for the proposed safety fence on town property, provides a penalty fee schedule for any date after the finish date, require a bond in the amount that the town feels is appropriate, and bring the temporary use agreement back to the Board of Selectmen on March 14th, 2024 meeting for review and possible approval and signature.
Do I have a second on that one?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second. I'm assuming you both agree to withdraw the motion, the second on your previous...
Yeah, I just moved the date, yeah.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we'll get those agreements worked out, agree to meet on the 14th to go over that and see if we can iron out details right out then. And did you have a second motion now?
I do. I haven't got the screening. I move to take no action at this time on the installation of the deck screening until an adequate signed plan by the owner is provided to the town, which includes the material being used, a scaled drawing of the deck and screening, a written plan on how the trash will be stored and removed, and steps and fees the town will take if the trash is not stored and removed per the plan.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motion by Linda, seconded by Brian. Any other discussion?
Is there, will we be looking at that same plan on the 14th?
No, there's no, I didn't put the 14th on that.
If they have it ready, I don't see why we couldn't look at it.
Can you have that ready by the 14th?
We'll have it all ready by then, yeah.
Can you add the 14th as an amendment into it?
Okay.
So the motion, the second, both agree to have it on the 14th?
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So you have any other questions for us right now, or?
No.
We kind of know what we're looking for.
And we'll sit down and meet then.
Sit down, and yeah, you guys got to, we'll get together ahead of time to make sure we get everything that we need to get together for the meeting.
If you could just call in tomorrow, we're swinging in and ask for Amy. She'll go ahead and work on getting something scheduled.
And then we'll schedule some time and hash all this stuff out, and then get something formalized, hopefully on the 14th?
Yes.
For the 14th, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for your time.
You've got a lot of work to do.
I do. Thank you.
Okay. John, did you, I mean, this wasn't a public hearing, John, but if you had something, I'll let you...
Yeah, John Thurston, I was sitting on the planning board at the time when this application came in front of us, and I know that, I sat next to Brad, and I said, one of the things that's most troublesome about this site is that when Joe Green's had their dumpster on their property, they never came in front of us to do a new site plan to move their dumpster over. And then what transpired was that they moved their trash bins over to an area underneath the new proposed site of the Downtown Grill, but that was part of the site plan that was to be proposed. And that site plan that was proposed was to screen that off and have that area accessed from an alleyway and not from the town's property. And one of the, one of the most troublesome aspects here is, this is an unhealthy, unsanitary situation, because what we have is, we have flies down there, we have jizz all over the ground, where these, you know, these are good workers down there that are working at this restaurant, but it's very unhealthy. Even the workers in the restaurants are complaining about the flies flying in their building and all over the, all over the place. If you have your vehicle down there, they're flying all in your vehicles. And I walked down there one day, and people were coming up to me going, what's going on over here? And I think one of the things that we talked about on the planning board was, we want to screen that area off so that they access from their own property and not from the town's property. And again, go back to where Joe Green's had their dumpster. They had their dumpster on their own property over there. Now, Joe Green's is now a deck over there, and now they're utilizing the town's property to access their trash facilities. And I think it's totally inappropriate. It's not right at all. I mean, everybody knows that this is a disgusting area, and we need to get it cleaned up. And a mesh screening is not going to do anything with, you know, they need to come up with a sophisticated plan to roll their dumpsters, trash bins underneath their building and be able to contain them. And they're not, they're not cleaning them, because the flies are in there, and it's, and the workers are dumping the limes and go down there in the nighttime, and there's stuff all over the sidewalk. So, you know, the town, the town has a little bit of responsibility here in this matter, because I don't think the town has been doing their job. I don't think the planning board has been doing their job either, and I don't think the codes officer really knows what to do when he goes down there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay. Next on our agenda, the E-911 addressing without voluntary compliance.
So you had requested an updated memo regarding the 911 addressing specific to Ferber Lane and Lady Slipper Lane. That memo has been updated. The public hearing is scheduled, and the upbutters are advised, so we should be good to go for April the 3rd.
Linda?
Jim, this memo said we need to make a motion to set the date of the public hearing. Did we do that at the last meeting? I'm just looking at the memo.
I thought we did, but let's just reaffirm that. Let's, yeah.
I thought we did, too.
I'm just reading the memo. So I'll make a motion to set a public hearing, April 3rd, 2024, at 6:30 PM, to assign a street name and a street address to Tax Map Lot 130-025 and Lot 130-030, in accordance with RSA 231:133-A.
And that's at 6 o'clock?
6:30.
6:30.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Brian, to establish the date of April 3rd. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, if I could have a, are we going to go, should we go into?
I think we have to.
Go into Libby Museum trustees, so I'd entertain a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Dave, to go into, as trustees of Libby Museum, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have a follow-up meeting we had with the Attorney General here. You want to walk us through any of this, Jim, or?
Yeah, sorry, I was just looking back in the minutes, and it looks like we discussed going into a public hearing, but we never actually motioned, so that puts that behind us.
For the April 3rd?
Yep. Okay, so we met with legal counsel in conjunction with the charitable trust unit for the Libby Museum. The gentleman is new in the role of the charitable trust director, and he came in to talk to us about the path forward with the Libby Museum. It was an interesting conversation. One of the discussion points that I think is the purpose of the discussion going forward tonight is, he understands that the challenges associated for a community running a museum. Further, he understands the intricacies of those challenges, and he thought it might be interesting for the town to potentially consider either A, getting out of the museum business, or B, looking for another purpose for the Libby Museum, which may not necessarily be a natural history museum. So I think with that said, that probably is a good segue into you as the Libby trustees to discuss further and what your thoughts may be moving forward as a board.
Okay, I guess one of the things to start out by saying is that we know we have a building up there with the Libby Museum building there and stuff, and we know that it needs some work, regardless of whether it stays as a natural history museum moving forward, you know, that's to be determined, much later dates and anything, so I think we do need to come up with a plan of how we want to approach some of these repairs. I think we've talked about it before, and I think we've done it in public too, about the fact we had a company onboard that was going to come in this past fall to reevaluate the building itself. He had his Burge on Technical Services, they had done previous reports on it, they were going to take another look at it and kind of prioritize some of the repairs, knowing what we have for budget right now to work with, and we were going to approach that way. Unfortunately, they became very busy with a large project up in Conway where they're from and had to back out, so we are in the process now of putting it out in RFQ for another company to come in and provide that service to us and help us with the plan moving forward with the museum. So I just thought I'd put that out there to start with, and every other comments here from the board.
Yeah, and we shouldn't have anybody get nervous. When we were talking with the attorney, we were talking about a way to keep the museum together, to improve its structure, to potentially keep it as a natural history museum, but also to have additional purposes for it. Design the right way, we could keep everything that's in the museum now still in the museum, but have a section of the museum that could be used for ecology, environmental studies, environmental camps for children, something else that could happen. We looked at that. Another thing we looked at is potentially getting together with some nonprofits in the state, Lakes Region Conservation Trust, Squam Lakes Association, Wolfboro, not Wolfboro Waters, Lake Winnipesaukee Association and other groups, to see if maybe we can have somebody who wants to keep it operating as a museum and maybe for ecology and environmental education, and not have it be something that the trustees and the select board have to run. So it's not like we're trying to close down the Libby Museum or get rid of the Libby Museum, we're trying to think of a way to bring it into 2025, 2026, 2027, 2030. So I want people to feel comfortable that that's our intent.
And I wonder whether at some point we shouldn't hold a public hearing, have people come in and give ideas about what we might be able to add to the museum. If there was a buyer out there that we could, or somebody who's willing to take it and get us out of the museum business, I think that would be good. I don't see that happening. So I think the next thing, what we're talking about, what Brian was talking about, is trying to be creative, to bring something else in to help us maintain what the Libby Museum can be. And it would be nice if we, and we're really looking for somebody to really run and manage it, is what I feel. But I really would like to have as many ideas and possibilities as possible and hear from the public on how they feel about that.
And it was pretty clear as well, Linda, that the way that the town has got into the Libby Museum business, that any of these changes going forward would have to be brought to the voters, so it wouldn't be a unilateral decision made by the Board of Selectmen, it would be put out for warrant for discussion and to make that change, just in transparency.
Yeah, very definitely, but I think before we even go anywhere, to get the idea, I don't want to head down a path and then find out the majority of the people think that's one of the worst ideas the Board of Selectmen has thought of. So, and I think there are a lot of creative people in town, and we should take, think about all the possibilities that we could do here.
Any other comments, questions?
One other thing, if we change any of the purpose of it, we probably will have to go back to the probate court.
Right.
Not just to the voters, but to the probate court to kind of change and get an okay.
Right.
And we have talked about and understood that the waterfront lot is valuable to the town, it's valuable to the barge owners on the lake, and that's something that we will do our best to retain that piece of property with its current use.
Well, the will stipulates that nothing can be built on that.
Yeah, nothing can be built.
So it's just what we do with the dock area.
Yeah, but we have to make sure that we maintain that dock area for its current use, even if we had a group take over the operation of the museum, that has to stay as what it's used for now, because it's valuable to our community and to people who service the lake.
If I recall, our meeting with the Attorney General person there.
I'll ask him.
Would it specifically have to get back with a certain answer to a letter at this time anyway, but they want to be kept involved with the progress moving forward and it kind of just be kept up to date as we're coming up with ideas and what we're going to do with the building and everything.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct from my recollection, and it was also my recollection, I put him on the spot a little bit here, but it was my recollection as well that Brian had a couple of ideas that he wanted to investigate, which we discussed, we can't make that decision in that forum, so I'm wondering if we discuss those options that Brian wanted to pursue, or do we hold off until elections and then schedule another Libby trustees meeting and try to develop a work plan moving forward for the year of 2024?
I don't have any problem with Brian moving forward with his ideas. You know, I think that makes sense, and if you want me to help you with any of it, I will, in looking at those, as we bring all the different options that we possibly can find here.
Right.
Brad, I think there's somebody who might want to make a public comment in the Libby trustees meeting.
Okay.
I don't know if you are going to okay that.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, well.
Public, Suzanne?
Did you want to make a comment regarding the Libby Museum, or as Libby trustees here?
I have a question. If you were to diversify the use of the building, is there a percentage? You would have to leave Libby and then a portion that would be this new devised enterprise that makes it more attractive? I mean, you got a will that says you're going to run a museum, so, no, you don't have to answer it, it's just throwing it out as a question and a thought. And the other question is, you answered half of what Jim read, but as far as being trustees, during this process, I've heard a few of you say, I wouldn't mind not being trustees anymore. Maybe we shouldn't be trustees. So during this new process, hopefully you'll discuss a different kind of formation about trustees. It's a conflict for selectmen to be trustees, but maybe it could be three selectmen or two selectmen and other appropriate people to be trustees. I know the will says the selectmen are trustees, but I.
My understanding is that that would be what, we would go back to the court, and the court would have to approve that we're doing a certain percentage and that we were going to change the way the trustees were.
I know, but you didn't address that just now, so I'm just saying, there's two components. It's not just the building and what's going to happen, but the trusteeship has not been so great, so.
We'd have to go to the court too, to have us.
I understand all that, I'm just saying you got two components, please address both components.
I wrote them down.
Yep, thank you, Suzanne. Okay, do we have any other comments or anything while we're in as trustees? Seeing that, I'd entertain a motion.
Would you like to schedule another meeting?
Both, to meet as trustees?
As Libby trustees, just so I can get it.
Yeah. Do you want to do it about a month?
In your second meeting in April?
Yeah.
First meeting in April is very booked.
Okay, let's shoot for the second, the third Wednesday of?
April 17th.
Yeah.
April 17th.
Okay. Anything else? I'd entertain a motion to come out of group meeting as trustees.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Linda, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Other business, do we have any other business this evening too?
Yes, we, I don't know if I'm the only one that has it, but do you have a raffle?
We did, it wasn't part of what was on the agenda.
Yeah, I noticed it was in the agenda that has the motions attached to it, but not in our other agenda, so I was going to bring that up too.
Brian, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, yeah.
It was item E.
I bet it off the.
What are we going to call it, let's see here?
It's listed as item E in that other agenda.
So, move to approve the LRTC raffle, raffle of baskets and gift certificates during a fundraising pasta dinner, raffle tickets will be torn off tickets for a dollar apiece, and the date is, hmm, do we know the date of this raffle?
Well, whatever the date of the raffle, that's the ticket, that's what it's for.
Right, we could just approve the raffle in general.
We're just raffle in general.
So we'll just approve the raffle?
Yep.
As listed on the application for permit to conduct raffle pursuant to RSA 287-A:7.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Dave, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business?
I have one question. Jim, when are we going to get any kind of financial report? We haven't gotten December 31st, and I understand it's not an audit report, but I would kind of like to have that information, and if we could get those by then?
March 20th.
Okay.
In case it's all lined up for March 20th.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else under other business? Committee reports. Brian, we'll start down there with you.
In the last two weeks. Huh, EDC?
Candidates Night.
Oh, Candidates Night, yeah, that was fun. So we had Candidates Night, we had, I had an EDC meeting, oh no, I didn't have an EDC meeting, I had an EDC conversation for a follow-up on Lake Winnipesaukee Day, and this meeting, that's all I've had.
I had, I went to Candidates Night, I thought it was very interesting. Last night Wolfboro met, we're starting to look at different venues that we may add for next year, and we're also looking at what other events that we think the community might like, so we're starting to do some of that planning. And I did meet with Jim and Brad, looking at a new software program that does asset management, and I'm really excited about it. It's been years I've been trying to get an asset management plan in town, and the one I saw seemed like it was a good program, and that's all I have.
Let's see, last night I had a planning board meeting I attended. Candidates Night I was here for is very well attended, I was very pleased with that. As Linda said, we did meet the other day on, I guess it was yesterday, looked at this software package for the town, and I also attended a bid opening last week on the South Main Waterline, which I assume Jim will probably speak about his report. And that was it for me. Dave?
I didn't have any.
Nothing, okay. Town manager's report.
Yeah, so as Brad alluded to, South Main Waterline project anticipate a large update on the April 3rd meeting. Hopefully we'll be mobilizing that week anyways to do the work. Right now, it looks like the project will get us down through the downtown area, however, based on the costs as they came in, we won't be able to do the railroad AV or central AV part of the project. It looks like the contract was awarded to Dawson. Again, we will hopefully do this work through the June timeframe, shut down for the summer and get started back up in the September to October timeframe to be able to finish that project. So that's moving forward very good. We're also in the final stages of getting these two sewer pump stations moving forward. This has been incredibly painful, and we'll be doing our last steps regarding the Mill Street, which is getting inspection services and award of the contract. We sat down and had a meeting regarding this asset management software, this asset management software for the citizens out there, this is covered through a grant, so the buy-in for the software is awarded through a grant, it'll streamline a significant amount of town operations. It's got multiple packages and it is expandable. Right now, the packages that we're looking at securing is the road surface plan, the water system plan, the wastewater plan, the stormwater plan, the sidewalk plan, fleet and facilities. And it will actually give us the ability to track inventories real-time, it's configurable to be able to do auto ordering when we get to a certain point of products, and at the closeout of the year, one of the issues that we have is, we have to, for our enterprise funds, look at what we have for stock in-house for audit purposes. And this software will actually allow us to hit a button and we will know what the value of that inventory is, so it'll save a significant amount of staff time. Again, this is all through a grant. Again, this is all through a grant that we've received. The buy-in for the project is approximately $25,000, and the annual maintenance subscription every year will be in the $15,000 to $18,000 range. The other nice thing about it is it'll streamline communications between departments. So, for example, if somebody calls Town Hall and says that there is a sign missing at a certain place, everybody in town will be able to issue that work order for that and it will go to the appropriate individual. Likewise, I was speaking with police and fire this morning, if for some reason, somebody calls Town Hall to report a deceased animal on the roadside, if that's an animal control issue, we set up the parameters within it and animal control through the police department gets an auto notification, and it'll streamline bumping people around to different departments when they call in. So, very optimistic that this will be something that we've been trying to get accomplished for a long time. Thanks to Steve Randall for getting the grant for us, finding the provider and actually getting this moving forward. So, very optimistic about that. And the last thing I wanted to touch on is, there's been a few letters to the editor in the paper over the past couple of weeks. And one thing that I would encourage citizens to do is go to our website and look at the actual town operating budget. I think there's some misinformation that's being distributed, and that's fine and dandy. But, for example, I can sit here with a great deal of confidence and say that our employees do contribute to their health plans, and that is a negotiated item through union negotiations. Additionally, there was some letters to the editor that laid out, I mean, different municipal budgets, and I'm not sure where that data came from, because as I go to the New Hampshire DRA website, I'll kind of run through some of the information. So in the letter to the editor, the Alton budget was $10,200,000. When you go to the New Hampshire DRA website, the actual tax rate operating budget was $28 million. Guilford, the letter to the editor was $18 million. You go to the New Hampshire Department of Revenue website, it's $36 million. Laconia, $22 million, which it's actually $54 million. You look at Meredith, it says $18 million, it's actually $37 million. Moltenborough, $11 million. The actual budget for 2023 was $31 million. Tuftonborough, $5 million. The actual 2023 operating budget was $13 million. Wolfboro is for 2023 was $35 million all in. So there's some misinformation out there. I would encourage you to go to the town website, look at the budget, become informed about the budget. Additionally, I would encourage people to understand that over $10 million of our budget is for the electric department. As a result of that, we, as the town of Wolfboro, experienced some very attractive electric rates compared to a number of other neighboring communities. In addition to our electric fund, we have three other enterprise funds. The water fund, which is 1.7 million, the sewer fund, which is 1.8 million, and the pop whaling fund, which is 460,000. Those, those four items are paid for by the users, not necessarily the taxpayers. So where we raise and appropriate that, the actual general fund budget is $19 million. And that's 54% of all of the $34 million that we raise in the operating budget. Further, if you go to the website and you look at the operating budget, you can see the breakdown of that regarding employee wages, benefits, et cetera. So please, make yourself informed and get out and vote. It's important you do that. Additionally, there's another article out there that is encouraging people to vote against the operating budget and the budget for the ambulance. And there's some information in that that basically paints a picture, and I'll speak for the selectman, but that states that we will find the money. Well, the fact of the matter is, if we go to a default budget, the citizens of Wolfboro will have ambulance services, but we have to make some management decisions as to where we're going to cut services to be able to provide that ambulance services at those increased costs. And I'm pretty sure that that's what the Board of Selectmen meant in their statement regarding, we'll find the money. Additionally, there's a statement in that closing comment of the letter to the editor that says, we have $2 million that we'll be able to use. Well, that $2 million is actually accounted for in unassigned fund balance, and contrary to the implications of that letter, we can't simply use it. The voters either have to approve us using it as a project in the warrant, or we have to use it to buy down the tax rate, which is our intention when we get into setting the tax rate in the October and November timeframe. So to close out on those letters to the editors, please become informed, form your own opinion. If you have questions, you're certainly encouraged to reach out to myself, any of the department heads or Board of Selectmen members. And lastly, I would just like to close by saying, we think. We will know better in a week or so, but it looks like we may be getting about a million-dollar grant for the public safety building, which will reduce the amount that we have to bond. So kudos to Captain Libby for moving that forward. We'll let you know more when that comes forward, but we're, we're hopeful that that will be coming forward. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Questions from the press? Do we have Alyssa with us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Along those lines of information and misinformation, I've been spending a lot of hours writing, writing up the Candidates Night. I thought there were a lot of questions asked and a lot of answers given, and we also had the deliberative session, and, you know, there was a lot of information in there. And the paper is full. It is online now. It's usually online on Wednesdays now, since the deadline is Tuesday morning at 9:00. And I encourage people to take the time before they vote to read through everything, but all.
Whoops.
Has film, you know, taped the event, and people, that is all available for people. They can watch everything, so I hope they do avail themselves of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Public input, limited to three minutes per person. We have people here for public input this evening.
John Thurston again. So at the Candidates Night, I know there was questions that were given to the moderator, and all those questions weren't submitted to ask to the candidates. And I asked the moderator if those questions could be put in the letter to the editor so that the people in the town knew what other questions were being asked of the people. And I thought that was probably something that the selectmen might want to consider to let everybody else know, that there's other questions from the public that people want to know, but they didn't, they didn't get asked. So I don't know what you feel about that.
A little late, isn't it, John?
Well, I get that, but I'm just saying, maybe, maybe they can still be putting the granite so that people know that there were other questions that are on people's minds so that they know, you know, if they need to ask that question again next year, and that's, because that's what Randy said, possibly.
Do, we'd have to go.
Yeah, who's in possession of those letters right now?
Yeah, I don't know. See, it was put on by Community TV.
Well, the moderator was giving those questions, Randy Walker, and I asked him about the questions.
Okay.
So he was, he was the one who basically said that he couldn't, he couldn't ask the questions because they weren't given in timely order, but he was accepting those questions that night of the Candidates Night, so.
Well, I think he was accepting, or just ran out of time. He actually went a half hour over, as it was, and there was still quite a stack of questions that came in, you know, that night there to him, obviously, but.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, John.
We should take a look at that.
Yeah.
We should take a look at it.
Derek Brown, Libby Street, 30 Libby Street. I've met some of you before, and thank you for the time tonight. It was fascinating listening to everything. And Ms. Murray, I appreciate your comment for my lead-in here. I think we have to listen to the citizens of this town. So I have brought handouts for everybody that I'm going to leave with you guys as well, but before I hand them out, I'd like to have your attention as I read this. Forgive my squinting, I had an eye surgery about a week and a half ago, so I'm going to do my best to get through this quickly. Okay. During the Meet the Candidates Night, I presented a question. Mr. Walker was kind enough to read it. I was one of the fortunate ones, I guess, Mr. Thurston, and it was, if you were elected to the select board, what would be your position on enforcing planning and zoning regulations with regards to violations? The sense from the candidates and the sitting members at the, in the room were this was a broad question. Yes, it was. And one candidate, a new potential candidate, made the distinction between private and public land use, which is correct. Public land, responsibilities for guide and decide from the selectmen. Private land, stay out of it. The zoning and planning boards should not be overruling one another. That was made by a sitting selectman. He also agreed with that candidate for the public versus private land position. Of particular interest, though, was that same sitting selectman said that these boards should not overrule one another. Like, that selectman had a problem with the appeal process, which is really what this is all about at the board level. I found that particularly fascinating. So as Meet the Candidates Night, there was much talk about the concern for the people of Wolfboro from the selectmen. There appears to be a considerable amount of concern when it comes to stormwater runoff when it heads towards our beautiful lakes and tributaries. Well, I ask you, the select board, what about the townspeople that don't live on the lake and their stormwater issues? What's happening with those? They have real issues, too. So, as we go on here, I have spent about 20 years, over the years I've met Ms. Murray in many occasions early on, with our problems on Libby Street with this problem. And it was a localized issue that we tried to focus on solving, and we were met with, I'll say, much less than stellar results, and leave it mildly. I have personally watched the town of Wolfboro turn its back on its citizens with the following quote from the town manager. This is a civil matter. That seems to be a popular phrase. By not adhering to existing zoning and planning directives that are on the books, it's not about being Gestapo-like, making homeowners lose their freedoms with their properties. It's about making sure everybody does what is already supposed to be done. And you're hired to do that at the planning managers' and directors' role, at the town manager's role, and it's not being done. So I'm kind of paraphrasing here, because I don't want to take too much time on this, because I'm going to give you these handouts, because I want to submit this as a formal complaint. Okay? So, in a nutshell, the food chain follows, and please correct me if I'm wrong, once we step outside the select board, we go to the town manager. It reports to the select board. And please correct me if I'm wrong, the planning director reports to the town manager. The planning department reports to the planning director. So, if the town planning director that oversees the planning department isn't doing their job as they're supposed to, isn't it the town manager's job to redirect or advise and correct accordingly? If the planning director is ignoring those guidelines, where do we go with that? Do we make changes at the planning board level? Or, I should say, the planning director level, the planning department level? Is it an ineffective issue at the town management level? That's not for me to decide. It's for me to come here, because from a corporate background, this is where it starts, people, right in this room. And it's not happening. I'm sad to say, because I know every one of you through the years, okay? So, that's where we are, okay? Now, just so you know, that I'm not sitting here writing a letter to the editor and hiding behind it. I'm standing here publicly. I'm going to give you two specific examples. Civil matters, I'm going to read this first one. I'm going to call it Libby Street. Now, I don't think very favorably, and pretty much anybody that has watched a town planning or zoning meeting this summer and fall knows for a fact, I'm not a fan of Mr. Beckwith. I've made that very clear for what's gone on on that property. But more specifically, why I'm standing here, and maybe he's watching out there right now, is that project was willfully, knowingly misguided by the town manager and the planning director of Wolfboro. They knew what they were supposed to do, and they ignored it, at great expense, making this a civil matter. So, landowners abutting, some of them are here, including us, have to hire attorneys to fight with one another, because we can't get the town to invoke existing requirements like site plan reviews. That's not, that's not a hard thing. And when you've got, in this case, one, I apologize because he's absent, two, three experienced contractors in the room, you guys are pretty familiar with what site plan reviews are. That shouldn't be a hard stretch to get them to do that. They're not doing it. And that leads to property damage. Now, when you call it a civil matter, you think you're getting off the hook. You're not. It is costing you money. I can tell you, just from the housing board, that the hearts are now involved in, that has involved the town, it's costing you legal money, all because you didn't have people do their job. So it is costing you money. It is costing the taxpayers money. It's costing us as property owners money. Me and some of these other people are sole proprietors. It's costing me money. I'm leaving work, I live 100 miles from here, to drive up here countless times to leave work to fight this problem that should have been solved transparently by existing process in place, and it's not. It's being ignored. So, the next example. 68 Center Street. We all know that address. Unfortunately, he's not here to speak. I'm really sad that he's not here, because I'd like to be looking at him when I say it. That site has a house and is a construction equipment storage site. It is also, from a passerby, the looks of a used equipment estate sale next to the sidewalk, between rental scooters, tidbits on the sidewalk. Anybody I've asked, has there been a site plan review of that property? What's being done about that property? I've gotten countless variations on answers, from it's grandfathered, to it's not necessary, to we've asked and he hasn't. I don't know what the answer is. All I know is, if he's got a commercial business, by the way, leading by example, that would be a good place to start as a selectman. Request a site plan review and do it right. You're setting the stage for everybody else to do the wrong thing. And I think the word, in this case, I know the word has been used grandfathered, I think that's a misuse of terms. I think the term properly used would be entitled, and that's improper. Now, I'm sorry for the harsh words, but I've lived it. I'm not sitting behind the grand estate. I'm not sitting behind the Grand Estate News, writing it anonymously. I'm here. I've lived it. There are witnesses to it in this room. Something needs to be done. So in closing, I would agree with the comment of private land use versus public. Absolutely. The problem is at the planning department level and the zoning boards, to let them do what they're supposed to do. If they don't, you need to step in and get this thing back on track. I know it can be done. The processes are all in place. You just have to choose to use it. Now, I'll ask one last thing. For people that are unfamiliar with the water problem, if you would all look at what's happened on North Main Street and pretend for a moment that's waterfront property, who in their right mind thinks that water doesn't make it to the lake? It does. It comes down Libby Street. It goes into the Back Bay, because it's not controlled. If it makes it, it's just not controlled. Okay? So, something's got to be done about it. And I am here begging for you guys to get involved, to push on the planning department to do the right thing. They've got the processes in place. They have to use them. And if they don't, make changes. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for public input this evening? Suzanne? Okay. Motion from the board?
I'll make a motion that we go into non-public session.
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Dave, to go into non-public session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, everybody.